I do. 5:06, we will call to order the Human Resources Subcommittee of the Pennsyltucket Regional School District.
Yeah, very good, okay. And the only item that we have tonight is to talk over a couple of things related to the Assistant Superintendent position. So in front of you, you have an advertisement, or, you know, what we would distribute to papers and other search organizations for the Assistant Superintendent position. I put in a little process and timeline at the bottom to give you an estimation about how this all typically works out. And then I provided you with a draft job description. So I didn't know if you had any comments or edits you wanted to make, or, you know, talk over anything. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I just, I'm just seeing this for the first time. I didn't see it posted online, did you?
I sent it to you on Friday.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Yep.
So, are we talking, then, given this timeline, and I was sort of presuming this based on just where we were at in the process, a start date of, of?
As soon as possible.
Yes, something?
Yeah, you can say from July, you know, from July on. I mean, if somebody's working right now, they may have a certain amount of time that they have to give notice.
Right.
So, you know, if we were advertising in January, you could have a July start date, no problem.
Right.
But now, it's hard to say.
Right.
So.
Am I correct in assuming a lot of school systems, generally speaking, July 1st is the, on the clock? In other words, normally, okay, that's when the budget usually starts. A lot of times, their job function
Yes.
ends then, and would begin with, we'll say, ASL, or whatever, if they change positions. And that's generally speaking.
Yeah, pretty typically.
For like 12-month employees.
Yeah, this sort of employee is a 12-month employee that goes, like I do, from July 1st to June 30th. So those are typical contract cycles for administrators, principals, or other ones. You can find some principals or curriculum coordinators that have maybe 10-month positions. But it's become pretty rare that an administrator would have anything much in a 12-month position.
Yeah, I mean, this is a very broad job description, which is probably exactly what you need in this school, where you're so lean on administration as it is. So you need somebody who can do.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, this is an extensive description.
Yeah, so I tried to be as specific as I could, so that if somebody were reading this, they'd get a feel for how could I do in that position. And it does span a lot of different areas, but that's what we do. In small school districts, you can't have, like, this is all I do. You know, I've worked in large school districts. Even there, you have a pretty large span of control in a position like this. But you also have people under you who have very specific job responsibilities. And here, you've got to be kind of, it's all hands on deck, and it's, everybody's got to do a little bit of everything.
Mm-hmm.
The major functions, though, I think, stand out, you know. So there's some, so I want somebody to take the curriculum component, and the re, so I begrudgingly give that up, but only in light of the amount, the enormous amount of time it's going to take for the school building project.
Right, right.
So we're coming to, like, a crossroads with those two things, where the work has got to continue with the curriculum, but the school building project is about to balloon out. So.
Is that, where do you emphasize the curriculum?
In the back.
Like, somebody who has experienced, because perhaps you'd want somebody who's been a curriculum coordinator, or what is it called, the Chief Education Officer, right?
Or a curriculum director.
Yeah, curriculum director.
Chief Academic Officer, Curriculum Coordinator. Those things are all good. It's more about somebody who could look at our policy and plan and make sense of it. So it's about a person who can follow, like, that pathway that we've carved out, rather than having expertise in every area. So even though I, so past couple of weekends, I've been editing the curriculum documents. And what I do is I edit them, and I bring them back, and I go to the, like, Ed Hickey, math department chair, and I'll say, "Ed, here's what I'm thinking, but you're the expert." Like, I don't have that expertise. And even though I taught science way back in the day, I'm not a science teacher expert anymore. So you have to rely on other people. But you've got to have the bigger picture in mind, and have the know, know how to do, you know, this work at this level, at least.
You.
A couple of points of interest. The introductory paragraph, I think of an Assistant Superintendent was moving laterally. In other words, thinking, "Pentucket Regional is the better school system go-to," and that's what they have. I would say, generally speaking, that first paragraph, where you don't even go to the second line with curriculum, and then the third line with the assessments, and then you continue. If an individual is going laterally, I think what they're presently doing, for most public school systems, would be this, anyways. So candidates coming in, probably the majority that are going to be applying, will have had that
Yeah.
in their resume, and responsibility from another school system. My other point of interest, just for cats, a lot of school systems will say their administrators have, will say teachers have 184 days, for some, 180, for some, 182. Well, administrators a lot of times will be 240.
Oh, yeah.
244, or whatever, whether you're a principal, or Assistant Super. Do you think that'd be a point that'd be thrown in there?
Yeah, I can do that.
Or are we assuming they all know they've got a minimum of 240?
Well, so, so he, I can put something like that in there. I would mimic my own contract. So I don't know how many days I work. I know I have a certain amount of weeks of vacation time
Right.
that's built in. And so I think that may be even the case with our administrators. I'd have to look. But I think that could be a good point.
And you have flexibility of when you want to take those.
Yeah.
Or?
So I could put a number of days in, that's not a problem.
But we, I, well, just, and again, playing devil's advocate, I don't know the answer. But, or do we leave this as the job description, and then that is in what is negotiated in terms of their contract?
Yeah, so, when, I can think of one principal who came in. They were being paid a higher salary in their district
Right.
before they came here.
Right.
And so I negotiated a little bit more flexibility in their contract around some things to kind of make up for it. So that is something that you can negotiate.
Yeah, I just, I wonder if we put it, I don't know how much that would then cause someone to assume that is part of what is expected in this.
You know what I could do, though, Wayne? I could put in 12-month position, 12-month contract. That tells them a lot, right there.
Right.
And then the rest of it, the number of days is really immaterial, you know. They know that it's a 12-month contract.
Particularly for the Super conscientious.
Right. And then if you got someone who is moving laterally, and we may want to use that as something we negotiate, oh, well, we can't give you this money, but we could give you
Yeah.
another few days of vacation, versus
Yeah.
someone who was, you know, a principal, or someone at that
Yeah.
other tier of leadership, that may be looking to step into superintendency
Yeah.
that we, you know, I mean, it just would give us that.
Funny to say that, because I think there's a chronological stepping. Educational stones, and a lot of people do use those.
Yeah.
Saying they want to go from principal to Assistant Super, because they have a goal in mind, superintendent.
Yeah.
I was stoked.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, under the primary function, so I guess coming back to the newspaper article.
Okay.
So I'm going to revolve around special education.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it says here halfway down, "Preference to be given to candidates who have demonstrated prior success in a district-wide leadership position, and with experience supervising special education services."
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully, they're, they're well-versed on, on special ed laws.
Yeah.
Or you could do, like, supervising and administering, or?
No, that's not my question, I guess.
No.
So, yeah.
Okay. So then up above, under the next page, under primary function.
Okay.
It's listed 504 services. So currently, 504 services fall to the principals, and not special ed coordinators.
Right.
Okay. And so there's nobody right now that oversees that, the next level up, over the principals, because
Mike Jarvis.
I'm still falling to Mike Jarvis, okay. So now, this is going from Mike Jarvis to the Assistant Superintendent.
Yeah.
And then special education out-of-district placement. That's huge. That's costly.
Yeah.
And that was Mike Jarvis's position as well. So now it's being transferred over.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's going to alleviate a lot of stuff on his plate.
Yeah.
And then, under qualifications.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm kind of whipping around this whole thing, where I'm very nervous of having somebody come in to say, "Yeah, I'm experienced," or, "Yeah, I've supervised," or whatever, but other good at it, you know, because it's very costly. And placement is critical to a student's success.
Right.
So you don't have any, you know, litigation afterwards.
Right, right.
But when it comes to the whole entire representative duties, I don't see any of that listed. Like, that, but of course, there's no special ed anything under any of the five categories.
Well, let's see. Where are you looking under the categories?
Well, under, well, it wouldn't fall into human resources. Supplemental education services, yeah, I think it's wrong, yeah. Core education services, possibly. Technology, no. Family engagement, no. So, to me, supplemental educational services?
Yeah.
I don't know if special ed really falls, because it's not supplemental. I mean, it's, it's delivery. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just give me a second, so that I can make sure I didn't leave it out.
I mean, I've read it a couple times, I'm just not finding it.
Well, so, so it needs to go here, under the core
Yeah.
programming. So that's a perfect example of why it's so important to talk through this. So I'll put that special education component, or components, under the core educational services.
Okay.
So that was an oversight.
And I mean, we have, like, the Crest Collaborative, and we have, you know,
Yeah.
probably agreements with other schools as well, you know, special ed schools, out-of-district placements.
Yeah.
I'd like to see whoever comes in be very well-versed on what is available in our area.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than, you know, I mean, it is what it is, but, or at least have somebody be well-trained as to the available, what's available in our area. Because if you have somebody coming out from Texas, or whatever, or, you know, Michigan, they're not going to have any clue
Mm-hmm.
what's available for out-of-district placement.
Yeah.
And what would you say about also someone, I mean, along those lines, like, what's available in terms of out-of-district placement, but perhaps maybe someone who's had experience in, in, eh, bleh, sorry, experience in managing in-district programs, and developing those?
Well, I mean, if you can, like, for the language-based, like, we have
Correct.
language-based program in here. So we were able to, you know, if those kids were elsewhere, we were able to bring them here. And if there are kids in other districts, and we have space, we could, we have serviced them as well.
Right.
So, yeah, it's absolutely important that if you can find, you know, a handful of kids that have a similar profile, keep them, you know, because it's least restrictive environment.
Correct.
Keep them in their home school, and find the educational person that's qualified and certified to, to service that population.
Right. But I mean, and that's exactly what I mean. It also, it meets the least restrictive environment, but it also, I mean, it helps us keep our kids
Well, it keeps families together.
It keeps families together, it keeps our family, kids in our community, it manages our special education costs.
Yeah, he or she would work under Mike for that part.
So.
So the out-of-district placement is still under Mike.
Right.
He would be the guiding force there.
Okay, so this, so he's still saying, so this is somebody that oversees Mike, in this?
Well, this person is not going to supervise Mike under special ed. But this person would work, would have that caseload to go out-of-district placements, right.
So if a student was identified that we can't meet their needs, and it was under Mike's umbrella, now it gets handed over to this person, and it goes underneath them?
Yeah, that's right.
Essentially, okay.
That's right. So this is, if you can picture, special education is the broad umbrella. That's Mike. One of the divisions under him would be this out-of-district placement. I need to take that away from him, so he can have a better focus under the, on the bigger picture.
Okay. So maybe even just adjusting, like, saying, collaborate with Director of Student Services, or whatever his title is, on special, you know?
Yeah.
So that it's clear that it's not this, because to me, this looks like special ed, like, yes, this will be the Assistant Superintendent's role, but clearly, there's going to be some, so I'm looking
So what line are you looking?
I'm looking on line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
4.
4. In, under primary function, where it says, "Special education out-of-district placement."
Collaborate, yeah, yeah.
Something like, collaborate with.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
Also, because I think that that sends a message about what, what, you know, you've worked so hard to build, and what we're really about as a district, is that we work together to meet
Yeah, that's right.
the needs of our kids.
That's right. Yeah, I like that a lot.
So.
How about the timeline? Any questions about that?
Is one day for interviews enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. How many applications would you expect to get for a position like this, this time of year? Do you have any idea?
Well, it's, it's hard to say. So I think there will be great interest in an Assistant Superintendent position that has a lot to do with curriculum.
Okay.
Like, everybody and his brother wants to be a curriculum director.
Okay.
So, well.
Really?
Well, because that's the fun work.
Yeah, right.
To be honest with you.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, I have people coming to me all the time, saying, you know, "I want to be the curriculum director, and so how do I get to do that?" And I said, "Well, that's the fun work, but
Right.
in a district our size, you've got to do everything."
Yeah.
So I think we'll get a pretty substantial number. My concern is that the timeline, like you mentioned
Yeah.
may not be great. So if we get a pool that doesn't have what we think, or even after the interviews
Yeah.
I would be recommending that we delay, like, the train's not going to stop if you don't have a person
Yeah.
in September.
Right.
Wait till January, do it again, and you'll get a
Do it early, do it right.
Does this have to go before the full committee, approval?
No.
Okay, so therefore, we can go beyond the posting.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you thinking it's not even necessarily worth posting it yet? Would the preference be to wait?
Well, I'd rather try.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, see what we get.
See what you get. Yeah, I'm not going to condemn the pool already.
But you'll, you'll, you wouldn't know if you're getting the correct.
No, let's not wait.
It's really clear in, with, I mean, with these, especially when you use their online tools like SchoolSpring.
Yeah, right.
That, I mean, you get, it's very clear, you get, you know, a pool where you're like, "Okay, you didn't read the job description, so have a nice day."
Yeah.
And then, it, you know, it usually pops up pretty fast. Because a lot of people at this time of year, who are even looking for things like this, like, they've got that thing set on auto for a new job. It's pops up, they've got their stuff ready to go.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, those are the people we want. People who are motivated, who want to be here.
Yeah.
And do all the stuff, not just the fun stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Just a point of interest to help lower your level of concern, laser on worried about the qualifications. The person doing the checking, you'd have the confidence that they know
What to
how to do it.
Yeah.
What to say, to check on whether those qualifications in, are indeed valid.
Yeah.
And in most cases, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, who they put in for references at headband, I thought, Masal, you can't call someone other than, we'll say, their superintendent that they work under. If they didn't put them, it's illegal for us to call that superintendent. So what's a real story on him?
Yeah, you've got to be careful about all that.
Yes, okay.
And even in the interview questions, we have an approach that targets, what did you do? Not what would you do. What did you do?
Exactly.
What's your level of success?
Yeah.
Give me an example of what you've already done. It's not speculative.
No.
Because people can give you anything that comes across their mind. So I'm pretty confident that, like, with our principals, our principals came through a process to ask them that same thing. And each time, the people around the table were really confident that person knew what they were doing, you know. There was a high level of confidence.
A lot of times, I like to see direct supervisors be the ones they go to for their recommendations.
Yeah, exactly.
That'll force us to the ground floor, and see what.
Exactly.
And a lot of times, what we do is, with the SchoolSpring piece, like, it'll say, "May contact, may not contact," those kinds of things. And you, what we've done is given, when we look at the applicants, we rate them based on different things. And that might be something we give points to. Like, if they're, whether it's a letter of recommendation, or they're, we say in some ways, their references, you know, can, could be concerning if all their references are people who worked under them. You know, that's a different kind of thing, as opposed to supervisors.
Yeah, eventually, you get to the point where you have to have somebody's direct supervisor. So, you know, I can understand that somebody would want to hold in confidence their application from their supervisor initially.
Right.
But eventually, you've got to get that person to talk with you.
Right.
So, you know, that's not usually a problem. In the beginning, it is, because a person who applies to this job could be at risk for doing that in their own district. You know, if you apply for a job, and you have a principalship or a central office position, you put yourself at risk for doing that.
Right. And it can, you know, mess up your morale with your coworkers, if they think you're trying to, like, jump ship or something.
Exactly, exactly. So, in any case, the next question I have for you is, so, what about the team? Who's going to be doing the interviewing? Like, when we searched for Greg LaBrecque's position, we had, I think, a representative from each community from the school committee.
We did.
And I think I participated, and I can't remember that it was too much bigger than that. That team came back with a recommendation for the full school committee.
Yeah.
And then the full school committee, you know, went, went off of that recommendation.
Yeah. And it looks like here, so if I'm understanding, or is it a clarifying question? So the interviews that you have tentatively for the June date of interviews would be from some type of interview committee
Yeah.
versus the July 11th, which would be the full committee, or as many people as are able.
Yeah. Yeah, the, typically, what you do is you would bring finalists back to the school committee.
Mm-hmm.
You would have them, it's not that they would interview, but, like, if I can think of the time when I came to interview, you would have a rotation of those people, and you might have some questions. And at the end of that, they, they would all go home, and then you would decide.
Yeah.
You know, what are we going to do?
So how many would you hope to interview on the 22nd versus the 11th? Just out of curiosity?
Usually, five people.
Five or six.
Yeah, five or six people, usually.
And then you'd bring three finalists?
Pretty typically, two or three, yeah. It depends who you get.
Right.
You know, sometimes, there's one person who just stands out, and you know that, you know, that's the person. Another time, you'll get a couple of people who, yeah, could be either, or any of them.
Well, and especially with such a big, a broad job description, I think
Yeah.
it's entirely possible that we'll find someone who's super-strong in, you know, curriculum and leadership and teacher development, but maybe doesn't have the special ed experience, or, and vice versa. We might find someone who's got, like, experience doing a little bit of everything, but might not be a strong, you know, so we're going to then have to balance
You have to decide.
you know, which, what kind of track record, what they're showing us, and what we think that they could, you know, do based on that, because
When's the last day of school?
The 20th.
20th.
20th, I think, yeah.
Your last day is the 20th, it is.
Yours is not.
Mine is the 19th. I'm not excited about that at all.
You're a little excited, yeah.
No, because I get to, because I never hear for the last day of school for myself, so I'm excited to be.
22nd.
After one week's brush, you should be dying to get back into the classroom.
22nd.
So, back to the question of who will interview, I would say we should at least, obviously, have somebody from each.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Are you going to include any principals in the interview process? I don't know what's normal for a superintendent position.
Right.
You know, I'm willing to take your recommendation and just kind of run with it. There's no hard and fast, like, set committee. Like, Jonathan would probably be a good person. Ken Kelly might, he'd be a good person.
Yeah.
They've been here a while, they kind of know things.
Yeah, I would, I would think maybe a couple principals, you know, the people are going to be working most directly with him.
Yeah.
I would also like to see somebody represented from the elementary level, because, I mean, you guys, the central office, like, you guys are all in these buildings, and it, as an elementary teacher as well, I just feel like a lot of times
Yeah.
those people may or may not be included in this.
Usually, a PAT person would be included. So maybe we could get a PAT rep from the elementary level. You know, like, if Maria would, would participate, that would be great, because she would not only be the president, but the, the
So what are you thinking for total numbers? Because there were, I think there was six.
Right.
When you're talking, we had one from each
Right.
town.
If I did a PAT person, if I did a principal, it's okay if I'm on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make, I, I will say, I do think that, as, like, I want to make sure that the school committee, as representatives of the town, have a substantial voice on this. Like, obviously, you guys have to work with this person, but I think that, you know
Do you guys like the idea of one member from each town?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I do.
Yeah. So if we had a PAT, a principal, superintendent, and a member from each town, that's six people.
That's six people.
And it's not like it's a vote kind of thing.
Right.
Like, these things typically evolve as
Consensus.
consensus, right? Does that sound good?
Yes.
Yeah, is it necessary to have a representative from each school, or do you think it's?
Each town?
No.
Oh, school, yeah, I see what you mean.
No, okay.
No, I would say not.
Okay.
What does PAT mean? I don't know what that
Pennsyltucket Association of Teachers.
The Pennsyltucket Association of Teachers.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm like, is it a
There's a lot of acronyms.
I'm sorry.
You have to get used to. Takes a while.
I'll make you feel better. Oh, PAT, that's what it's been for six years.
Sitting here trying to figure it out, I'm like, oh, God.
So if everything's okay, I'll tune up the, the job description and the notice.
Yeah.
And I'll put it out on May 5th, you know?
Yeah.
And we'll get going right away.
Okay.
See what we get.
So my next question to you is, who will play a role in selecting the people from the posts?
Well, be, so the application deadline is June 2nd.
Yeah.
And we have between the 2nd and the 9th
Yeah.
for invitations. So that week, I could have the applications available, people could come in.
Okay. Well, we have subcommitments on the 6th, June 6th.
Well, probably, we schedule that week, wouldn't we? July? Oh, no, not, no, I'm sorry.
June.
I'm thinking July, I'm like, yeah.
Yeah. So they could be available at my office.
Absolutely.
You know, in an area where you could come in and just go through them. And we could And we could have a little, you know, at the end of it, you could recommend like up to five people or something. And, you know, then we could sort out, like, it may not be all the same people who are recommended. And we could take the top people and bring them in. It's pretty usual that even with a thick stack, there are like five or six people who kind of rise to the top.
Yes, definitely rise to the top.
Yeah. And everybody will have their own different reasons for it, but, you know, that's been my experience.
And are you required to have a licensure as superintendent of schools? Or can you have, go, you know, be going, working towards it?
Well, I'm thinking we want somebody who's licensed. Yeah, I don't want somebody who's.
Almost licensed, okay.
Are there different, I don't, I know a lot about the teacher licensure, but I don't know as much about the, are there different types of administrative licenses?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so again.
There are levels like teachers, so levels for secondary, they span across, though. So you can get like 9 through 12 is pretty much high school, then 5 through 8. And then there's, I think, N through 6, nursery school through 6. And the only reason I can quote it is because I have those certifications from way back. Then there's assistant superintendent, superintendent, you know, so.
So those are additional certifications in addition to whatever your primary area.
This curriculum director, this department head, there's, like, there are several layers of these.
Now, so would a, so would a principal who wanted to apply for this position, would he have to go out and get this specific credential in order to apply?
Apply, yeah.
How long does it take to do that? I mean, can you skip over the assistant superintendent certification and go right to the superintendent?
Yeah, so, yeah.
And then would it encompass the assistant as well, or? If we found someone who had a superintendent certificate, but not an assistant superintendent, like they would.
I think it's assistant superintendent slash superintendent certification. And the reason I'm a little fuzzy on that is that it's different in Connecticut. When I came here from Connecticut, I remember there being like a little bit of a difference.
I think that's true, you'd skip being principal if you wanted to.
Oh, you don't have to be a principal to be a superintendent.
You definitely can. You can skip from principal to.
Superintendent.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
So our next meeting as a whole group, is that when you want to ask people?
Volunteers from each town.
Who will?
Yeah.
And I feel like that would at least need to be through the, like, the reference piece. Like, that committee would need to commit to those, you know, to the, I guess, really to the date of the 22nd. But, I mean, and to be able to, you know, maybe do some of the reference reviews.
Yeah, so what I'll do on Friday is I'll put out this again. And I'll let the members of the school committee know that at the May meeting, we'll be looking for volunteers who can commit to the schedule and participate. And then you all can make your decisions about who'd like to do that and go from there. Great? Okay, well, this is exciting.
It is exciting, all right.
I can't believe how many things you're doing. Like, that this is all falling under you right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So hopefully, this will be.
And it's poor Mike, too. Like, you see a lot of the things here from Mike. I need him to focus in on, you know, he's done a great job for a couple of years, but it's time.
All right, so do we need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second.
There we go.
All right, at 5:38 PM on Tuesday, May 2nd, we adjourn our subcommittee.
All right, thanks very much.